And this is Gavel to Gavel, WCVW TV's complete coverage of Richmond City Council. Good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first meeting of the month of June. As I said, first meeting of the month of June, so there's going to be some changes from the original plan. A paper is going to be introduced a little bit later on tonight that will change things around a little bit. As it stands right now, from what I understand, we will meet again two weeks from tonight. Normally this would have been a one-meeting month, this will be a two-meeting month. Then in July, we'll meet once, but it'll be the 4th Monday. We will not meet in August. We'll have two meetings in September, and then one in October, one in November, one December. That's the paper that's going to be introduced tonight. So, plan on being with us again two weeks from tonight, on the 22nd of June. What have we got tonight? Okay, well beside the introduction, there's some papers, some expedited considerations. We've got 23 items on consent, two items on regular, and here they go. Item number one, Ordinance 2014-93, Establishing Advisory Task Force for the Economic Revitalization of South Richmond, Continued to July 27. Item two, Ordinance 2014-221, and this is a special use at 1600 Monument Avenue. This would authorize outdoor dining. This is the Mind Noodle Restaurant, but that paper has been continued until July 27. Item three, Ordinance 2015-20, and this is a special use at 310 North 33rd Street for conversion of an existing building to a multifamily dwelling. That one stays on consent. Item four, Ordinance 2015-99, and this is authorizing 501 North 2nd Street for the purpose of constructing a four-story office building to permit medical office uses upon certain terms and conditions. That stays on consent. Item five, Ordinance 2015-102, this concerns contracting for professional services by competitive negotiation to revise the contractual limits applicable to contracts. This one's continued until July 27. Item six, Ordinance 2015-111, special use 425 North 25th Street for a mixed-use building with up to two dwelling units and uses permitted in the UB Urban Business District, continued until July 27. Item seven, Ordinance 2015-113, this is rezoning 2101 East Main Street as conditional. That is going to be on the consent agenda for tonight. Item eight, Ordinance 2015-114, and this is accepting $31,200 from the National Recreation and Parks Association, and this is for the purpose of funding the summer food service program and the child and adult food program. Stays on consent. Item nine, Ordinance 2015-115, this authorizes the CAO to accept $18,000 from the Supreme Court of Virginia, and this is for the purpose of providing drug treatment services through the Richmond Adult Drug Treatment Court Program. That stays on consent. Item 10, Ordinance 2015-116, this transfers $55,102 from the Department of Information Technology Agency, and appropriates that money to a new line item for the purpose of providing a grant to the Richmond Ambulance Authority. This is so they can purchase software licenses necessary to enable the authority to operate on the city's computer-aided dispatch communication system. That stays... Sounded a little confusing, it's not really that confusing, and it stays on consent. Item 11, Ordinance 2015-117, this increasing revenues, estimated revenues by $250,000, and appropriates that to the Department of Planning and Development Review for the disbursement to the Economic Development Authority pursuant to the Arts and Cultural District Facade Improvement Program. That one is going to stay on consent. Item 12, Ordinance 2015-118, this reinstates a career development program for certain police and fire officers. Not only does that stay on the consent agenda, but also all members of council have now signed on as sponsors of this paper. So that stays on consent. Same thing with item 13, this ordinance 2015-119, and this will be revising the implementation schedule for sworn firefighters and police officers to provide for salary increases and step advancements. Once again, all members of council are on board with this one now, and it'll stay on consent. Item 14, Ordinance 2015-120, and this is accepting $23,600 from the National Association of County and City Health Officials for the purpose of supporting the planning and implementation of initiatives to increase breastfeeding in the city. Stays on consent. Item 15, Ordinance 2015-123, and this accepts $252,449 from GRTC, and that's for the purpose of providing additional subsidy to GRTC to fund construction of a temporary transfer plaza and a system-wide bus stop sign replacement program. Stay on consent. Item 16, Ordinance 2015-124, this is amending a paper. What it's going to do is it's going to bring additional funds through the school budget. That stays on consent. Item 17, Ordinance 2015-125, this is transferring funds from the current budget for various agencies. That stays on consent. Item 18, Ordinance 2015-126, and this is for the provision of services in the downtown Richmond Special Service and Assessment Districts. That stays on consent. Item 19, Ordinance 2015-127, this concerns deferred retirement option program for extending... No, it's just going to extend the participation period in the deferred option program. That's staying on consent, and all members of council have signed on with that paper as well. Item number 20, Ordinance 2015-128, this accepts $125,927 in additional state shared tax funds, appropriating the increase to the Richmond Public Schools, so more money for schools. And that stays on consent. Item 21, Resolution 2013-R254, once again, this is talking about the real property of budding Princeton Creek, and that's been continued again until the 27th of July. Item 22, Resolution 2014-R150, enhanced speeding penalties on Maguire Drive between Broadrock and Hopkins Road. That's been continued until June 22. And then item 23, Resolution 2015-R35, and this is approving $1,104.15 of the 9th District to pay for catering services for 9th District meetings in January, March, and April. They all stay on consent. Now, regular agenda, two items. Well, not anymore. Item 24, Ordinance 2015-35, and this concerns the duties of the Department of Information Technology for the purpose of prescribing that the main internet webpage of each department or other agency include a link to audit reports and information concerning the status of implementations of audit recommendations. That one's continued till June 22. And item 25, that's Resolution 2014-R184, and this is to request the CAO to cause to be issued a request for proposals for the purpose of selecting a development company for the Boulevard site. That one is being moved to the consent agenda. Now, this does not mean they're going to start building on the Boulevard, this is just right now requesting the CAO to cause to be issued a request for proposals, nothing specific, but it's going to the consent agenda. So, okay, we've got, started with 23 items on consent, we've got six being continued, one item being added to that from the regular agenda, so we have 18 items on the regular agenda, or on the consent agenda. Regular agenda started with two items, one continued, one moved to consent, so no items tonight, once again, on the regular agenda. Speakers tonight, we have a full slate, eight speakers for citizens' comment period. And let's see, they're talking about overgrown trees on Hopkins Road and Wombsley Boulevard. One thanking members of council for the support on the bill against texting and driving. One talking about housing for veterans. One to speak on dangerous, vacant, and condemned homes. And four speakers to speak about the Children's Hospital. So those are the speakers. No awards and presentations for tonight. Several expedited consideration resolutions, and they're all basically approving expenditures from council district funds. One for the Boys and Girls Clubs, one, let's see, for green initiatives, one for, let's see, oh, city leaf collection schedule, one to approve $3,000 for the cost, here again, the leaf collection schedule, and another one, policy matters pertaining to aspects of local government. This is to pay the College of Women and Marriage to provide a stipend for an intern to assist councilmembers for the 2nd District. So that's all. Oh, and we have one more here, and this is the one we were talking about. This one, if it's an expedited consideration, if it's approved, it'll provide for two meetings this month instead of just one. Then the July meeting, which would normally be the 13th, will now be the 27th. There'll be no meetings in August. We'll have two meetings in September, and then one meeting on the 2nd Monday of October, November, and December. So if that is approved, and apparently it will be, it will say that we will meet twice this month instead of just once, and then instead of the 2nd Monday in July, we'll meet the 4th Monday. Take the month of August off, then come back with two meetings in September, and those will be on the 2nd and 4th Mondays, and then the 2nd Monday of October, November, and December. And then we'll be back to two meetings a month next year, next calendar year, January, February, March, April, May, and June. So if that is passed, that is what's going to be happening. So that's what's going to be on tonight, and we have, if you'd have been here earlier, we had technical problems with the sound system here, so the councilmembers had no microphones during the part of the informal hearing, so they all had to use, as the President, President Mosby said, "Use your outdoor voice," which they did, and halfway through they were able to repair everything, so we're back to normal for tonight. And how long are we going to be here? Well, we don't know, and that's why we have the meeting. So we'll be getting started in just a couple of minutes. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting will now come to order. At this time, the invocation will be given by Rosalinda Rivera.
I have your heads with me. Lord, we just thank you so much, Lord God, for our city of Richmond. Lord Father, we give you the praise and the honor and the glory, and we thank you, Lord God, that we can come together with dedicated leaders that are here that represent our city, all of our interests, Lord God. And Lord, I just thank you for the people that dwell within our boundaries here of Richmond, Lord God, for their families, for the children, Lord God, all of the people that you've entrusted for us to guide and to lead, Lord Father. And Lord, I thank you for the dedicated people on our police force, Lord God, our fire department, our EMT, our local heroes, and each one of our council members tonight, Lord Father, I lift them up, Lord God, as they give up their time to represent areas, Lord Father, within our city. Lord Father, I pray that you would bless them individually, Lord God, that you will strengthen them, that you would be the lifter of their head, Lord God, that you would guide their decisions, Lord Father, and Lord, even on an individual basis, Lord God, that you would meet their own needs, Lord Father. And Lord, I thank you for even the race that has come into Richmond, all the many people that will be exposed to our town. I pray that your continued grace, Lord Father, would cover our area here, Lord God, and help us to choose wisely as we continue to direct Richmond in the way it should grow. And I ask you tonight, Lord Father, that you would guide us, continue to cover us, Lord, with your grace and your peace, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands for a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Madam Clerk, if you would please provide the chamber emergency evacuation announcement, followed by the citizen speaker guidelines.
Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chamber, or the east or west stairwells outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay, 8th, and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizens wishing to speak during public hearings and/or the citizen comment period have generally three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to, campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the President of Council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary action as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future meetings of the city council for a period of six months.
Madam President, for the record, all members of council are in attendance this evening. An individual standing in the rear of the chamber is asked to please be seated where seats are available. And per council's rules of procedure, applause is only permitted during the awards and presentations portion of tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we would move on to the appointments or reappointments, please.
Yes, council members, you have been provided a copy of the packet for the appointment to the City Planning Commission. Is there a motion concerning the proposed appointment?
Motion to approve.
Just a moment, Ms. Graziano.
I'd like to continue this and send it back to Land Use for further discussion. That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second. I withdraw my...
Okay, I believe we need...
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to continue the proposed appointment to the next Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee meeting, which has been seconded. Council is now voting on that motion. Mr. Bellials?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agalesto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbell?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That motion has passed, that appointment will be before the Land Use Committee for consideration.
Thank you. I believe there are no awards and presentations for the evening?
That is correct.
All right, Madam Clerk, if we could move on to citizen comment period, please.
First citizen is Maria Morton Hart.
Good afternoon, Madam President and Vice Chair. My name is Marie Morton Hart. I reside in the 8th District. Once again, nobody have done anything but those trees in my yard. This is the 10th time I've been down here, and I wish somebody would come out there and do some of those trees. I thought everybody in here understand what's going on. Why do y'all let that male get away with what he's doing? You all have known him as long as I have, but y'all need to do something, because, I mean, the policemen, and the farmers, and the schools need money. Why do he have to have security? Who is he afraid of? Will you please tell me? Why?
I'm sorry, Ms. Hart, but you would have to stick to the topic which you'd sign up to speak on concerning the trees.
Okay, well, anyway, when he leave here, the city gonna be broke.
Madam President, Marie lives in my district, and I've been out there again, and I know that, I think you've been out there too, and I understand she's disgusted, I understand she's fed up, and I understand where she's coming from, because, you know, to me, she is a senior, her husband's a senior, she has a child that needs special care, and to walk across that yard, and to know that she's been down here 10 times now trying to get help.
Ms. Trammell? I guess I'm having a moment, because the last time I went to see Ms. Hart, I was under the impression that the fire department was going to do something to take care of the issue, and if that did not happen, I asked Ms. Hart to call me, so that I could then work out something. So I was under the impression that because I didn't hear anything, that this issue had been resolved.
I think that they are, but they have to, they gotta go through some...
Okay, should we talk offline?
Yeah, I have spoken to the firefighters that are willing to help her, but I think they gotta make sure that everything is...
Okay, can you and I talk about this to make sure we get it resolved? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Minister Tracy Whitlock. Mr. Tracy Whitlock. The next speaker is Larry Robertson.
Good evening, President Mosby and Vice President Herbert. My name is Larry Robertson, and I'm from New York, and my topic tonight is homeless veterans. That's what we do. I want to see if we can work with the city to get some buildings that the city have, so we can house the homeless veterans who's sleeping in shelters and in bus terminals in Richmond. I was born here in Virginia myself, but I moved to New York here, and I've been in New York for 47 years, so I'm coming back home to see if we can help the veteran. I have several places that I house veterans in New York. So I did some work on your veterans in Richmond, and in any given night, you have about 75 homeless veterans sleeping in the streets, and under bridges, and old buildings. So we want to see if we can come down and open up a facility, and work with the veteran, and work with the city of Richmond, to see can we help our veteran who helped us. And that's my topic for tonight, so I wish we can get together on this topic, and it's a good topic, because our veteran needs help. And when a lot of veterans come to me, and I see the position, especially in New York, it's bad, and in just the state of New York, we have 62,619 homeless veterans that're sleeping in the subways and in the streets. So I'm doing my part to try to help New York, and I was born here in Virginia, so let me come back to Virginia and see what I can do to help our veterans in Virginia. And like I said, my name is Larry Robertson, I'm the President of Veteran in Command. That's my company, and I started in '12, '02, to help veterans. That's what I'm doing now. And so far, we've been working out, we have four facilities in New York that we house homeless veterans. And we, see, most veterans been stereotyped that they're on drugs, they're doing this and they're doing that, but all they need is a little helping hand. And when I say helping hand, somebody to guide them in the right direction, and that's what we do in my company. what we do in my company, do. And I'm a diehard on that, and that's why I spend all my time, and I retired from the Port Authority for 33 years in New York. So I wish we can get together, if you got any kind of buildings or anything, because I work through the federal government, who we can get funded and help take some of our homeless veterans off the street. That's about what I wanna do. And I wanna thank you for this time, and thank all your workers for guiding me in the right direction to get here, to get to you guys. And you got a wonderful staff, and I wanna give them thanks too. And thank you, and that's all I have to say, and I hope I can hear from you soon.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Agostino?
Mr. Robertson, before you go too far, we have in Virginia a group called Homeward.
Yes.
And they're working in Richmond, and their executive director, Kelly Kinghorn, is somebody you should make contact with if you haven't already. They have set forth the goal to end veteran homelessness by the end of this year.
Okay.
So that is something that they are working on, and the group, again, is named Homeward.
Do you have any information on there, or do I have to look it up?
I can get you the information.
I would appreciate that, and we'll see what we can do. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Theodora Param.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening because there are so many issues in this city that need to be dealt with, and my issue tonight is concerning mold, black mold, M-O-L-D. I want each of you all to take time, when you leave this chamber, to go look up black mold and see what causes it and what's going on. Now, for years, I've been speaking to you about our schools. That's what's in our schools. That's what's smelling. That's what's running, shutting our schools down. Millions of children in the city of Richmond each year are killed by black mold. They go to school all year round. They're breathing in the schools. The heating and air conditionings aren't being cleaned out. This stuff is growing. You can't see it growing in the air, but it is very dangerous. Hallam Park, the 6th District, we have hundreds of homes that have been inundated by this green. It starts out green, and then sometimes it gets white. But when you look at a house and you see black drippings, it's usually mold. You can't wash it down. There are ways and processes that you deal with this stuff. You all have, some of you all have knowingly, some of you all have unknowingly hurt thousands of children. The childrens are our future. It is your job and your responsibility to take care of these children, not to turn me away and punish me because I have knowledge that I've been willing to share with you all for years. I think you think it's a joke, but on your way home this evening, I want you guys to look out of your windows. I want you guys to notice houses and properties. Notice the rooftops that have no trees, but they still got all this black residue and brown residue. This stuff is deadly. When you're in the district like I am in Hallam Park, every other house is vacant. This mold is spreading in the air.
You have 30 seconds. Please begin to summarize.
I'm saying, look up black mold on your computer, and we need to make some changes. We need to get people in this organization that has the ability to lead you all and save the children. If not, your children gonna have asthma, bronchitis, using a nebulizer. Give the children a chance like we gave you guys. Some of you guys have...
Good time, stop. Thank you.
That's all right. And I have to say this one more thing. When I come to you with knowledge, you ignore me. That's why the woman was killed on Broad Street with a dog. Shaka Smart, listen to me. Guess why he's not here? Ha, ha, ha. He listened. He did his homework. He did his homework. You all need to do your homework. You are getting paid, and you're killing the children.
The next speaker is Boyd Winslow.
I'm gonna change the tone a little bit. President Mosby and council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak briefly about a matter of urgency to us in the community who are interested in the cause of a children's hospital. I'm Boyd Winslow, as you introduced me. I'm a practitioner of a pediatric surgical specialty here in Richmond, and I've had my home and practice in Richmond for more than 20 years. I serve children of every demographic, but I'm not alone here tonight. A lot of people came with me to speak about the issue before you, and I'll put it in context for a minute, but I wonder if I could, with your permission, ask the people who represent the children's hospitals, just to stand for a moment so you can see the passion this group. That looks good to me. By their number and the enthusiasm they show in coming here, the desire to build a true freestanding children's hospital in Richmond is alive and well despite anything you might have read or heard in the news that the idea is dead. To put it into context, the request we make tonight is because of our foreknowledge that there is an issue coming before you about the allocation of a site on the North Boulevard, and we wanna make sure that you pause and consider the use of that site because it's a leading contender for our children's hospital. We understand that there's a delicate balance that you all have to maintain about our city's current tasks and future needs, but we feel that the chance is now to have a great children's hospital for Richmond. Some of you may think, now what's the issue here? We have a children's hospital, we have lots of pediatricians and specialists. But I wanna give you just a brief insider's view. In the years I've been here, we've had pretty good to good pediatrics in a number of locations, but for many years, Richmond, this great capital city of the Commonwealth, has been unable to pull together all of the care of children into one unifying great institution that is not beholden to any other entity. We feel that the opportunity is now. We have the capital in the commitment of a really great group of parents and patients, the physicians and specialists for pediatrics in the community, and the business community and philanthropic donors. We feel that we are very close to achieving this accomplishment, what we'll call the Virginia Children's Hospital, and we believe strongly that it should be in Richmond.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. The council, mindful of its vision, a commitment to creating a vibrant community that is a great place to live, work, learn, play, visit, and raise a family, can support our goal by postponing final decision on that North Boulevard site. Let's continue to strive to set this jewel and the crown that is Richmond, the capital and cultural center of the Commonwealth. Children's hospitals are in every city our size in the country in a time that we had ours. Thanks very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Joseph Boatwright.
Good evening, President Mosby and the rest of city council. I wanna thank you all for allowing me to speak with you all this evening. I'm a pediatrician. I've been practicing in Jackson Ward on Clay Street since 1978, and also wanna mention, and I'm a very proud graduate of the Magahel Walker High School, class of 1966, that will be celebrating its 50th anniversary reunion next year. And what brings me here this evening is a wonderful opportunity that you all have to develop the Boulevard slash Diamond area with so many suitors, and I won't debate about what the children's hospital is or isn't, but I want to bring you a perspective I would like for you to ponder and investigate as you make your decisions. What I call that is the children's hospital without walls. If you think about it, we have children that are treated in the hospital, but the majority of our children are treated in outpatient site centers and need that type of support. So what I've been looking at and interested in and feel that the Boulevard would be an ideal site is to bring together doctors that would move back into the city of Richmond to form a network of providers for our children through EMRs and health information exchanges that can be done. I would like to see offices, outpatient cardiac centers, hospices, long-term care facilities, and all of that on this campus. I would like to see us more retail and housing for the individuals that would work there. I would like to see us partner with the groups that we have in the city that have worked for years with children, such as Maymont, the Children's Museum, the Science Museum, and Sports Backers and so forth, for them to have a prominent place in this, what I call Children's Center of Excellence, which, oh, by the way, would include the Central Virginia Children's Hospital. When you think of Williamsburg, or Virginia Beach, or Charlottesville, you have a vision of what that city is before you even get there. This is the vision I would like to see for Central Virginia down to Richmond, is this center, that you don't come to Richmond unless you visit this center which happens to have a children's hospital.
You have 30 seconds.
If you live in the city, you want to be a part of this on an ongoing basis, and I just wanted to ask you to think about that as you ponder, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Gail Smith.
My name is Gail Smith. I live in the 2nd District, and for the majority of my career, I practiced in the city of Richmond also. I came down to talk about the children's hospital and the fact that we need a new one. I can tell you why, but I can't do it in three minutes. So the second point that I wanna make is that the largest philanthropic gift in the history of all children's hospitals in the United States is on the table in front of our community to build a new children's hospital. My dad was famous for saying, where there's a will, there's a way, and the will does exist, maybe not among a few hospital administrators, but the will exists in this room. When children are sick enough to be in the hospital, or they need an operation, or they need a specialist, they go to one of three different community hospitals now. There is no other city the size of Richmond that does it this way. Every other city has built a hospital just for their children, and I can't stop repeating that truth until every mother in our city understands it. I don't know what a memo of understanding is, but I know that a year ago, when VCU and Bon Secours signed one, some amazing things have happened in this last year. They got together and made lists of all the things that they had to have to collaborate and work together, and they agreed on just about every one of them. They made a list of 20-something places where the hospital could be, and narrowed it down to two, maybe three places. One of those sites is in my neighborhood. I don't understand why they quit, but I can tell you that the pediatricians haven't quit, and the Alliance Board hasn't quit, and the philanthropists haven't quit. They're all still here. The hospital is going to be built. I really, truly believe that, and the CEOs who aren't able to move forward at this time, they're watching us, and I think that they'll come along. The hospital is really gonna be built, and I would like to see it built in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Preston.
Good evening, President and Vice President. My name is Susan Jordan Preston. I live at 7021 Dalton Road, Richmond, Virginia, in the 4th District. I am a surgical technologist at a local hospital here in Richmond. I'm here tonight to support the PAC kids. We desperately need a children's hospital here in Richmond for all our children and the surrounding counties. The health institutions we have here now, old and new, does not always have the proper tools to correct the medical issues with our children. So what do they do? They do the next best thing. They either send our kids to another hospital in Virginia, or they have to send them out of state. Why do we have to send our kids out of state for proper care? Because we don't have it here in Richmond, Virginia. And most of that can be very expensive. So the next best thing, the next best thing the PAC kids do is to treat them with what they have. I don't want my kids with the next best thing. I want my grandkids with the best thing. And I feel like a children's hospital here in Richmond on the Boulevard, around the corner from the Children's Museum, is a great idea. We always hear about King's Daughter, the Boston Children's Hospital, John Hopkins, that's where we send all our kids. Why can't, sometimes they will hear about, why can't they hear about the Richmond Children's Hospital, the Virginia Children's Hospital located on the Boulevard? Thank you very much.
Madam President, that concludes the list of speakers for this evening. Ms. Trammell?
Madam President, I wanted to clear something up. Earlier, when Marie Hart was here speaking for my district about the trees, and it is not the firefighters, per se, that's gonna go out there and help her. These are retired firefighters, and maybe some of the ones that are not gonna be working on duty, that could be working off duty, that are going to go back over there and look at it because they went out there, but nobody came to the door, so they knew that they could not go in the property without the permission of Mr. or Mrs. Hart. But anyway, I just wanna take this time to thank the retired firefighters that did go out there and tried to help her, and they have committed to go back out there and see what they can do to solve some of the issue. But they're not there to cut the trees, and I think that was another issue that she had. She wants the trees to be cut right there on her property.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanna say thank you to all the speakers who came. Your voices were heard. We heard you.
Madam Clerk?
Let's move on to the expedited paper regarding this council's procedures.
Okay, that is Resolution Number 2015-R40, and that's to amend the rules of procedure adopted by Resolution Number 2014-R253-240, for the purpose of changing the dates in which the regular meetings are to be held. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of that paper. Councilor Bilalz, will you make that motion?
I will.
Councilwoman Newbill, will you second that?
Second, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Council is voting on expedited consideration of Resolution Number 2015-R40. Mr. Bilalz? Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agostino?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper's before you for consideration.
Okay, at this time, we will have a public hearing on the paper. Are there persons that wish to speak in opposition of the paper? Are there persons who wish to speak in favor of the paper? Bring it back to council. Call the question.
Council's voting on Resolution Number 2014-R40. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agostino?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby? That paper has been adopted.
All right, Madam Clerk, if we could move on to review the amendments to tonight's agenda.
Amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 1, ordinance number 2014-93, and item 2, ordinance number 2014-221, will be continued to the Monday, July 27 council meeting. Item 5, ordinance number 2015-102, and item 6, ordinance number 2015-111, will be continued to the Monday, July 27 council meeting. Item 21, resolution number 2013-254, will also be continued to the Monday, July 27 council meeting. Item 22, resolution number 2014-R150, will be continued to the Monday, June 22 council meeting. Item 23, resolution number 2014-R184, has been moved to this evening's consent agenda. And item 25, ordinance number 2015-35, will also be continued to the Monday, June 22 council meeting. Madam President, those are all of tonight's agenda amendments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does any other council member have any additional amendments? Madam Clerk, please call the question.
I will need a motion to accept...
I will need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented. Councilmember Newbill, will you make that motion?
No move, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Samuels, will you second that motion?
So seconded.
Counsel is voting on this evening's agenda amendments as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we could move on to the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Yes, Madam President, the consent agenda items for tonight are as follows. Item three, ordinance number 2015-20, to amend the ordinance which authorized the special use of 310 North 33rd Street for the conversion of an existing building to a multifamily dwelling with up to 50 units and principal commercial uses to authorize outdoor dining. Item four, ordinance number 2015-99, to amend the ordinance which authorized the use of 501 North 2nd Street for the purposes of constructing a four-story office building with accessory parking to permit medical office uses. Item seven, ordinance number 2015-113, to amend the ordinance which conditionally rezoned 2101 East Main Street to the B5 Central Business District for the purpose of repealing one of the proffer conditions applicable to the property. Item eight, ordinance number 2015-114, to accept $31,200 from the National Recreation and Park Association and appropriate the amount to the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities for funding the summer food service and child and adult food programs. Item nine, ordinance number 2015-115, to accept $18,000 from the Supreme Court of Virginia and to appropriate the amount to the judiciary for drug treatment services through the Richmond Adult Drug Treatment Court program. Item 10, ordinance number 2015-116, to amend the ordinance which adopts the fiscal year 2015 general fund budget to transfer $55,000 from the Department of Information Technology to the Richmond Ambulance Authority for the purposes of software licenses necessary to enable the authority to operate on the city's computer-aided dispatch communication system. Item 11, ordinance number 2015-117, to repeal ordinance number 2013-128-118, and to amend the ordinance which adopts the fiscal year 2015 general fund budget by re-appropriating $250,000 from the fund balance excess for fiscal year 2013 and by appropriating $250,000 to the Department of Planning and Development Review for disbursement to the Economic Development Authority. Item 12, ordinance number 2015-118, to amend the ordinance to reinstate the career development program for certain police and fire officers. Item 13, ordinance number 2015-119, to amend section three of Article Three of the Pay Plan for the purpose of revising the implementation schedule for sworn firefighters and police officers to provide for salary increases and step advancements. Item 14, ordinance number 2015-120, to accept $23,600 from the National Association of County and City Health officials and to appropriate the amount to the Department of Social Services for the purpose of supporting the planning and implementation of initiatives to increase breastfeeding in the city. Item 15, ordinance number 2015-123, to accept $252,000 from the Greater Richmond Transit Company and to appropriate the amount to the GRTC Transit Core Line item to fund the construction of a temporary transfer plaza and a system-wide bus stop sign replacement project. Item 16, ordinance number 2015-124, to amend the school budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2015 for the purpose of appropriating additional funds. Item 17, ordinance number 2015-125, to amend the ordinance which adopted the fiscal year 2015 general fund budget by transferring funds from various agencies and non-departmental programs and appropriating such funds to various agencies and non-departmental programs. Item 18, ordinance number 2015-126, to approve the work plan and budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2016 for the provisions of services in the downtown Richmond Special Service and Assessment Districts. Item 19, ordinance number 2015-127, to amend and reord- reordain city code concerning the deferred retirement option program for the purpose of extending the participation period in the program. Item 20, ordinance number 2015-128, to accept $125,927 in additional state shared sales tax funds and appropriate the increased revenues to Richmond Public Schools. Item 23, resolution number 2014-R184, to request of the CAO cause to be issued a request for proposals for the purpose of selecting a development company for the Boulevard site. Item 24, resolution number 2015-R35, to approve $1,104 from the council districts' funds for the ninth district to pay Sisters Delight LLC for catering services provided at the January, March, and April 9th district meetings. Those are all of the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will have a public hearing on the consent agenda. Are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition of any of these papers? Any?
Hi. President and Vice President, thanks for hearing me. I'm Kenlaw Nelson. I live in the first district. I think the reason that folks came out here to talk about the children's hospital tonight was in hopes of you all considering whether the Boulevard might be an appropriate site. It looks like the request, the idea of putting money out to fund that that 60-acre site is part of the consent agenda. Does that mean that if we if we accept the consent agenda that we're that the children's hospital is not considered a good use of that site? Okay, that's all I wanted to sort of hear and hear your comments on that and what you thought.
Mr. Bilalz?
Yes. The paper issues a, asks the Economic Development Department Administration to issue a request for qualifications, and all that does is they will draft a very, very, very broad scope and ask anybody that might be interested in developing the site, including the Children's Hospital Alliance, to submit their qualifications to develop that site. And so whether it's, and the resolution itself has zero restrictions on what could be, there's nothing being proposed to be developed. It's just kind of a financial wherewithal background check, so to speak. That's probably a bad way to put it, but it does not disqualify the property from being used for anything.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. And can I also say this is an opportunity to give the citizens a chance to come out here and tell us what you all would like to have too. Okay?
Thank you.
Is there any in the audience that would wish to speak in favor? We have someone else speak in opposition?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm in, my name is Melissa Nelson. I'm in the first district. I work in the city of Richmond. I'm a pediatrician. I've been working on this children's hospital project for the last four and a half years, and I'm not going to quit until I think every kid in this region has equal access to the same quality of care. And that's what we're going for, equal access to care. And in one place where every kid has access to the best care that we as a community can provide. And if there's any question about what a children's hospital is, it is a place where everybody and everything in the place puts children's health care as the first priority. And there is no such hospital here in Richmond. There are no hospitals where everything that's decided, every nurse, every doctor, every radiologist, every board member puts children's health care as their number-one priority. In our health care systems, children are 10% of those decisions. So a children's hospital is a place where 100% of the time we think about children's health care. You have an army of pediatricians. I don't know of a single pediatrician in the community who wouldn't support this and send our patients there. And you have an army of parents, and you have a huge philanthropic community ready to invest in the city of Richmond. I think that the Boulevard would be the best site. It will be bringing people downtown into the city, as Dr. Boatwright mentioned, for all kinds of things. It'll be a center of excellence, and it's accessible. I think that this is a wonderful opportunity, and we have to have a long view on this.
Thank you.
My name's Clifford Foster. I'm from the first district, live on Hanover Avenue, and I would just like to echo Dr. Nelson's comments. I went to, with the Chamber of Commerce, I went to the inner-city trip down to Tampa and St. Petersburg, Florida, last year. And this past year, I went to Nashville. And on both those trips, I went with the group to take a tour of the children's hospital in St. Petersburg and the children's hospital in Nashville. And I would just urge each of you, before you make decisions that may impact the prospect of a children's hospital in Richmond, to to learn as much as you can. And if you've never been to a true children's hospital, find a way to go to one, and you'll see what Dr. Nelson was referring to. Everything in those facilities is directed at children, not 10% or 15 or 20, but the entire facility. And, you know, I'm fortunate enough, my kids are healthy, but, you know, I think our community deserves the very best that we can, that we can have. VCU is a fantastic facility, a research organization, a great educational partner in the, in the, in the community, but it's not a children's hospital. So before you make big decisions on developing the Boulevard or other tracts of land that could potentially serve as a home to a children's hospital, I hope you will each take as much time as you can to to get up to speed on what a true children's hospital does. Thank you very much.
I was told I could come back again if I wanted to, to say something about the children's hospital's perspective as opposed to talking about the children's hospital without walls. I trained here in the, in the city.
If you could say your name first.
Joseph Boatwright.
Thank you.
Okay. We were somewhat, again, I started in 1978, and at that time, I think we were somewhat a victim of our own successes at that time. The health care paradigm for children was such that it was hospital-centric. In other words, if we had a patient and put that patient in, the specialists would come in to see the patient, and by the time we discharged it in four or five days, we'd have a pretty good idea of what was going on, and we could then then send them for their outpatient visits. But when managed care came in around the 90s, that paradigm changed to outpatient services versus inpatient services, which meant the patients then had to go hither, thither. You'd make three appointments for three referrals, and you'd, and you'd luck out if they attended one. And that's the model that we've had since about the 90s. The last patient that I had to send out of this area had been the UVA, St. Mary's, MCV, King's Daughters. And fortunately, MCV, an insurance company, found a place for him at Nemours Children's Hospital in Florida. He was down there for three months. All the mom had to do was show up with him and her other two kids. Everything literally was taken care of from that, from that point. He received all the care he needed. He had his education done on campus. They took him to Disney World. They took him to church. The only thing she complained about was having, was, was being a little homesick. They gave him tickets to come up to Amtrak on the weekends when he wasn't getting his, when he wasn't getting his therapy. Now that he's back, back in this, in this community, he's back to where he was before. One of his diagnoses, oh, I'm sorry, he also now goes to Virginia, so now he goes to Virginia Treatment Center, MCV, St. Mary's, my office, and three specialists in the community. One of his diagnoses is a form of post-traumatic stress syndrome due to having for a nine, 10-year-old having to deal with this level of care going into the different environments.
You have thirty seconds.
And the Virginia Treatment Center has him on medication just for the standard of care that he is, is dealing with. So these are the types of things that we're trying to rectify in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Boatwright, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The children's hospital, what are the ages for the children's hospital?
The children's hospital would be all the way through from, from infants to, infants to adolescents.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I promise I'm not trying to be dramatic. Not yet, anyway. Good evening. My name is Richard Davis, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here this evening. I'm a City of Richmond resident and have been for 11 years, and I'm also a parent to two young girls. The older is almost nine, the younger is five. These facts are relevant in speaking to you about my desired use of the Boulevard site as a potential location for an independent freestanding children's hospital. My younger daughter has a rare genetic disorder that has forced my family to be a heavy and frequent user of the fragmented pediatric health care system in this region since the earliest days of her life. We've seen doctors, therapists, and specialists associated with HCA, Bon Secours, VCU, and also in private practice. We've been so underserved that we now receive the majority of her care out of state, a very expensive and inconvenient solution. And we are not alone in this conclusion. We know of many families that share our fate. I've become a very active supporter of improving pediatric health, health care in this region, and firmly believe that an independent freestanding children's hospital is the best solution to this longstanding problem. The existing health care systems have had decades to get it right and have yet to even come close. As I stand before you this evening, I am reminded of the famous Dr. Seuss story, after all, we're talking about children's health care, the Lorax. If you remember, in that story, the Lorax is a character that serves as the spokesperson against the, against the destruction of the trees. Towards the end of the story, as the last tree falls, we see the Lorax leave the town, but not before leaving an important but mysterious message on a sign. It's one word. It says unless. As a young boy tries to understand the fate and history of his town, the meaning of the Lorax's sign is finally revealed, and I quote, "But now, now that you're here," the word of the Lorax seems perfectly clear. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. I feel as though the group with me here, supporting the children's hospital, represents the Lorax, speaking not for the environment tonight, but for the region's children. Unless members of this community, of city council, and of the surrounding counties join this effort, pediatric health care will remain second best. I ask you tonight to hold on putting out an RFP on the development of the Boulevard site until a path forward on the children's hospital is more clear. Thank you.
If there are others that want to speak in opposition of the paper, if I could get you to line up for me, so it gives me an idea of how many we have.
Hi, my name is Keith Durco. I'm the chairman of the Board of PAC Kids. We started four years ago because of what we've observed for years over what you have heard today. Couple of things, just in terms of numbers. We have, first of all, we have great docs, and we're fairly united in the sense that we're first pediatricians and second employees of our own organizations or competing hospital systems. We have a board that consists of people of private practice, generalists, specialists, and people on, and doctors on both Bon Secours and VCU's employment roles. After the announcement came out, we had a board meeting a week ago, and there was no attrition from our board. Members from every group stayed. Our problem was, as you've seen from commentary in the paper, that this was a process that needed to be played out. We have an unprecedented gift. We have incredible emotion and momentum. From people we've talked to around the country, they're all rooting for us, and they see this as a need. I had the good fortune to train in both Pittsburgh and Cincinnati Children's Hospitals, and number three and number eight children's hospitals currently. They weren't that when I was there, but by unifying the community, especially in the case of Cincinnati, they pulled all pediatric services together in 1977, and now they're the number-three hospital in the world, or in the country. This can be done. This process needs to be played out. This is our last chance as a city to do something of distinction, and we're not going to quit. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ann Malef, and this is my son Nate. And while we are property owners in the first district of the city of Richmond, we live in Powhatan County, and we come to the city of Richmond all the time for our medical care. We're lucky that we don't have to go, like the little girl who was sitting right in front of me, she goes to Boston, she goes to Florida, she's all over the place. We're lucky because we get care here. What I would like to ask you all is to think about this from a regional perspective. I have a background in economic development. I used to work for the Greater Richmond Partnership. The communities came together to bring businesses to the Greater Richmond area. Every local government understood that a business in one jurisdiction really helped out the entire community. What a children's hospital will do for our community is beyond just saving children's lives, and don't get me wrong, I think it will. My son fractured his skull. I took him to the wrong hospital. I took him to a hospital. My son fractured his skull, I took him to the wrong hospital, I took him to a hospital where they don't have a pediatric neurosurgeon. I was told he had a brain bleed, and he was going to have to get transferred. I took him to the wrong hospital. Would you know where to take your kid if there was an emergency? Because you might not pick the right one. The entire community has been talking about baseball, they've been saying the facility is dilapidated. Think about how our children are getting treated. What is more important than anything? Our children. Look at the facilities that our children are being treated in, and they are not the same type of facilities that are being used in other cities. The entire Richmond community needs to step up, and I'm asking you all to do your part, to think about the kids in the region, to think about how you can market this in terms of, of a regional project, and the entire community needs to get together and embrace this for the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of city council. My name is Omar Canyada, residing in the Nats District. I know the paper before you specifically addressed issues of economic impact in terms of development site on the Boulevard, but because, because some of the, the narrative tonight has taken a focus as relates to healthcare and health issues as relates to youth, I just want to expand, and I'd be somewhat amiss, I'd like to expand that conversation in a more inclusive way to talk about issues of health as it relates to children throughout the Richmond community, specifically in terms of developmental issues that related to poverty, as so many issues and issues of health disparity exists. I'm just hoping as you listen to this narration in regards to this one particular project, that this creates a mindset around other issues as it relates to youth health, children's health, family health, specifically in districts where poverty rates are out of the sky. I think you probably have some data before you that obviously talk about the disparity of healthcare and the different age groups throughout the City of Richmond. And as I say, this, I know my comments may not necessarily specifically address what you are deciding tonight, but as many residents, citizens here have discussed the issue of youth care, healthcare, as it relates to youth population, I just want to make sure that there's an expanded, inclusive vision in that regard, or that narrative that talk about healthcare specifically as it relates to young people and the children in this particular community, and whether indeed, whether it's the strategic planning to make Richmond not only an economic and competitive environment in regards to standalone health facilities, but also the environmental factors that lead to so many issues of health disparity in so many of our young people in the City of Richmond. I just hope you take this in consideration as you ponder the notion of healthcare specifically as it relates to the children of Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Courtney Jordan. I actually live in Henrico County. My oldest son went through, not quite the situation that your son did, but we, he was born with a congenital birth defect, and it was not truly diagnosed until he was about 20 months old, but it was an extenuating period of time and sort of exhaustive trying to diagnose what his situation was. And it was going back and forth through specialists and through pediatrician, pediatric offices, and just not knowing how to figure out what was wrong with him. He had an extremely rare condition, that was a GI condition, that was finally diagnosed. But if we had a place for him to go, I grew up in Hampton Roads, and so immediately I thought of, well, we'll just go to the children's hospital on Brook Road. Well, that was not the place to go, obviously. And until we figured out what his trouble was, and then we were able to surgically correct it, it was, we were in this sort of cloud of not knowing what was wrong with him. He is now a healthy 14-year-old boy, he is athletic and strong, but we didn't have anywhere to go. We didn't, and to get questions answered, it took a really long time. So we didn't have the experience of going to the wrong hospital, but we just didn't have a place to get our questions answered. And we went to many emergency rooms to try to figure out what was wrong with them. And as a young mother at the time, and I immediately had another baby, and her care was limited because I was still trying to figure out what was wrong with my older son, it just, it put a lot of strain and stress on my marriage and my family and my ability to be a mom, and I experienced some depression at the time. I mean, it's just a, it was a hard time. So just, if you all have the ability to think about what goes on in a young mother's life, and then also in, in the times of just not knowing how to diagnose sort of what can be a really rare and scary thing, a children's hospital, and when we're, there were something like a children's hospital at the King's Daughters, I was a candy striper there as a young girl, so immediately I thought, that's where we go. And I quickly found the, as lovely as the spot is on Brook Road, which now has incorporated with VCU, it was not the same facility. So fortunately, he has been surgically, he's all better now, but anyway, it was, it was a miracle that he was able to be corrected. So I just hope you'll take that into consideration, that if there was a freestanding independent hospital where the research was being done, and all of the physicians and doctors in research and surgeons were all under one roof, his condition would have immediately been identified even as early as one month old, and he wouldn't have to have suffered for nearly two years with the condition that he had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak in favor of any of the papers on tonight's agenda?
I'm a resident of Henrico County, but at one point was a very frequent user of the medical system here, and I just have three points. I've lived in two other cities, both of which had hospitals that are very well-regarded, designated for children, so if you've had the comparative, you know that we can do I also want to make the point that this isn't just for children who have chronic illness or rare diseases, this is for every single person, because you're one accident away from needing care, and you need to know where to go, and you need to know where to go fast, and quantity makes quality. When you can put all of your talent under one roof, you get good outcome. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that this is one problem that is truly fixable. We have amazing donors, we have a huge support system from parents to community members, neighborhoods, school nurses, teachers, everybody is behind this. So with your consideration, leaving this open to the use for a hospital, this is a problem that we can actually master. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you please call the question.
Madam President?
Mrs. Sims?
I just had a few statements. From the comments tonight, it sounds like folks are under an impression that this was the site chosen for the children's hospital, by a nodding or shaking of heads. Is that, am I misunderstanding kind of where people feel the hospital's going?
It's a short list?
The short list. The other places are still in play as well. Okay. I was, I was hopeful that I hadn't missed something, that this was, had been the fact it, it had been selected. And then, because there was no advocacy for any other site, again, by nodding or shaking of hands, is this something that the folks in this room believe is the appropriate site for the hospital, or is this just, you don't want any sites to disappear?
I think this is the site.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Nelson. It's nice seeing you. For those of you all that don't know, when my son was born, Dr. Nelson was the second doctor to see him.
Remember that.
At any rate, the one thing I would like to point out is that I have had the opportunity to visit the children's hospital in Nashville this year and saw the incredible work they did. It did appear from that visit that a children's hospital is as unique to a region as that region cares for it to be. The one in Nashville took up less than a city block and was in a high-rise. To my understanding, others are sprawling campuses that can take up more than 100, 200 acres. With that in mind, there is no prohibition in this paper of a portion or all of the site being used for a hospital. There is certainly no prohibition against a portion of it being used for a hospital. And this is not a guarantee that something's going to be built in 90 days on the Boulevard, that something will be built in a year on the Boulevard. But after years and years of being told by the administration, it's not council's role to play, economic development, that that is outside of our bailiwick, we believe that as the governing body, frequently, council must make policy decisions that can move our city forward. Whatever the highest and best use for the Boulevard is, we would like to see what ideas are out there. And that's really what this paper does, is it begins a process to allow folks who have an idea for what could possibly go on the Boulevard, to discuss how it is they are capable of making their thought come true, how much experience they have in economic development and building, whether or not they believe there should be a public comment or an impressive amount of public input into the project. All these things are vitally important, but none of them preclude a hospital from going here or in any of the other sites throughout our region. I want to thank each of you for coming down today to advocate so passionately, intellectually, and with great respect for your beliefs and for the difficult decisions we have to make. It's nice to see a debate that does not go down into someone calling me a dingo. So with, this is an inside council joke. So with that, I do want to thank you all for taking the time to come down and make this known, but please rest assured, this does not prohibit a children's hospital or any, any development from occurring on the Boulevard.
Ms. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to also say thank you to all of you who've come down to express your interests and your passion for a children's hospital in this region. It is good to know that the support for such is as strong as it is, and that Richmond can count on and depend upon that broad-based community support for a community, I mean, for a children's hospital in this region. I too have had the great fortune and opportunity to visit two different states' children's hospital and appreciate what you're saying, and certainly, it would be, it's a need for this region, and it's certainly something that we should continue to pursue and not give up on, and we're glad to have your backing. I want to speak, Madam President, to the paper that is before us, which is on our consent agenda number 23, resolution number 2014, R. 184. I raised some concerns in regards to this paper prior to the formal meeting, and what I want to make sure that I'm clear on and express my, my continued concerns as relates to the paper, is that I think the opportunity to look at and requesting that the Chief Administrative Officer of the City of Richmond issue a proposal to request, an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications of prospective contractors, purchasers, or tenants regarding the Boulevard site, states also that it is not restricted to or limited to, and may or may not include a minor league baseball stadium. It does not make any reference to any other specific uses of the land of the Boulevard for the request for qualification of contractors or ones that would be interested in purchasing the land, and their qualifications for wanting to do so. It also says that it be, that it is further resolved that the city council hereby establish a policy that the council will not approve any proposals for the development of the Boulevard until the city administration has issued this request for qualification, and any subsequent requests for proposals for the Boulevard site has, and has received development proposals in response to this request. My understanding of what that means is that based on the responses that we get from issuing a request for qualification at this stage, that subsequent proposals that we would receive would be subjected to the initial response from those that are interested in developing and those that are interested in purchasing for the purpose of developing the Boulevard. Because this proposal does not set any limits as to what type of proposals would come in, and it does not give any specifics as to what those qualifications would have to be in order to make a proposal for the development of the Boulevard, it does not address, and what the, the citizens that have come down to speak in favor of the Boulevard, that this paper does not suggest or address that a bullet, a children's hospital would be even one of the things that is named. The only thing that is named is that a may, we may or may not, it could may or may not as it relates to the major league baseball stadium, stadium. My concern with this is that we would be leaving the qualifications, we would have to evaluate the qualification without any predetermined use that we would like to see on the Boulevard, without any community input into shaping what we could, what the community would like or not like to see. I think we have a great opportunity with the development on the Boulevard. I think it's, it's an ideal site. It requires, we're in the process, we've been working on a new way of looking at developing, strategically developing sites in the City of Richmond for over a year for proposal or legislation to be introduced, and have not been successful in getting there yet. But a part of that strategy is that we would drive our development based on the economic needs for the city, but also based on citizens' input with small area plans to support those kinds of development. We have not done that for the Boulevard. I think this is a critical site. I think the outcry tonight of what these persons would like to see, I'm sure that there are others that have other ideas of what they would like to see. I think it's difficult for me to try to qualify, to justify what the qualifications would be for any developer without having any indication from the city and from the city residents as to what we would like to see on the site. And for those reasons, I'm not prepared to support this paper.
Thank you. Dr. Nubin?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank PAC Kids, Dr. Nelson, Dr. Boatwright, the Bon Secours, HCA, MCV, VCU, private practitioners, parents, children who've been working diligently to ensure that we have the highest quality of care possible for our children in this state, in this region. And I guess, Dr. Nelson, as I hear you reference the fact that it's been four years, it's a long time, but I, I must admit, I'm not prepared to give up yet, and would hope that all of those concerned entities would consider coming back to the table to work through some effort that would allow us to get to this kind of offering in our community. And so I would encourage that. I would... I would, I can't tell you how strongly I would encourage that. And thank you, first of all, I know it's not been easy, but it's worthy cause that you're working towards here, and I'm not, Dr. Nelson happens to be the closest to me, but all of the docs, and the parents, and the youngster who's come down, I just really want to say thank you. But I do want to ask you to please go back to the table, to try to work, to come up with something that's workable. Similarly, have concerns as my colleague, and so based on what she shared and the concerns she's raised, so I won't be redundant there, I think at this point, and also based on what staff shared, when we had them come forward to ask about this type of strategy, and when it's been done in other cities, and my impression from the comment was that there were at least some basic parameters that were given in terms of the, you know, that would allow people then to be clear about, while it might not have specificity in terms of a particular project, there would be some borders, if you will, so that people weren't just all over the place. So for that reason, I would not be supporting this paper, Madam President. Thank you.
Ms. Aguilasto.
Thank you, and I know a lot of thought has been put in tonight on this paper as it pertains to the proposed children's hospital, and I appreciate all of the remarks. And as somebody who grew up in Virginia Beach, I know what value the children's hospital of the King's Daughters provided, and have seen many of my family members benefit greatly from a resource like that. And I think the biggest issue that is before us right now is, we have a large property in the City of Richmond, and this city is being, I think, hit with a lot of competing interests for that parcel, a lot of competing interests. How do you create a system that presents a, perhaps a matter of fairness in that, so that one voice isn't washing out another voice? I think oftentimes, when something gets presented to City Council, it has bypassed a lot of the public engagement, it has bypassed a lot of what would we as a community want for that space, and it ends up becoming which voice was the loudest in the early phases. This takes out that, that voice being too loud in the early phase. This is the early phase of, well, we have this property, and who's interested? And once we know who's interested, we can then actually weight your interest, weight the feasibility, weight the economic impact, weight the, the quality of the, the new proposal to our community, and what that means. Obviously, it's not all about dollars and cents, a lot of it has to do with healthcare, a lot of it has to do with social values. And we don't get there as long as there are all these competing interests who are simply tugging at ears. And I think that this proposal simply puts it out to see what our options are, and then once you know your options, you can make a better informed choice. And I think that's where we really are, and we struggle mightily in this city to make a decision, because constantly you hear the "what if?", and can we just wait for this other group to maybe do its thing? And we end up sitting for a long time. I know that PAC Kids and all of the supporters have been working hard for a number of years. The CHKD in Norfolk, it took seven years. So I wouldn't give up. And what I would highly suggest is if this is approved tonight, to submit qualifications, to get a proposal in front of the public. Right now, the proposals that, that we hear about really don't ever make it into the public eye, and when it comes to nine members of City Council who represent the public's interests, and many of us haven't quite seen whatever proposals might exist, it's important that we get informed, so that we can help lead and guide our constituents to a decision about the use of this real estate. And certainly, I've, I've got a lot of interest in making sure that the city moves forward for all of its constituents, and I appreciate those that came down to speak tonight on this issue.
Ms. Trammell.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to thank all the speakers that came down here tonight to speak about the children's hospital, and I'd like to thank the one speaker that brought up the word "regional", because I think this is something that the surrounding counties could support, because a children's hospital, as I've heard so many say, and then I've been to so many meetings where I've seen the children, and I've heard from parents that have said, if they only had the right hospital, the right doctor, that could diagnose what the problem was when the child was first born. And this really touched my heart, you know, to hear you all speak almost the same thing as several people in my district have brought up to me at different meetings, or my eighth district meeting that they come to, and I think that, I think we should support this, definitely, and we don't need to wait until later on, we need to do something now for our children, something now, for like the mother that came down here and said that, you know, don't, you know, it was a hardship on her family, on herself, her children, her marriage, trying to take care of the child, trying to find out what is wrong with the child, because if you had that children's hospital, you've got all the special doctors, nurses, everybody in there, and it doesn't matter what that child looks like, what he or she is, that is a children's hospital for all children, and not only in the City of Richmond, but regional. So I, I think we should support something like this, right now, not later. Thank you.
Vice President Hill.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo the comments and appreciation for you all to come down, and Dr. Boatwright, it's good to see you again, and thank you for all your work over the years. This is a, a little bit of a difficult one, in that I heard that the partners in this hospital plan, VCU and Bonsecours, were, while leaving the door ajar for some future possibilities, they're really, their statements were not encouraging to me. And I'd like to see, let me say this, if proposal comes in here for a children's hospital on the Boulevard, there can be no higher economic development purpose of which I am aware. And economic development and doing the right thing and healing sick children are about as high as it gets. So if there were to be a proposal to come into that effect, I would be its biggest What I'm hearing, however, is that any sort of vote in, that we're going ahead with this might necessarily send the wrong signal to the marketplace for this, and I really don't want to do that. I mean, if there's a glimmer of hope that this is going to happen, then let's give it some more time. But time is not on our side in the City of Richmond, I have to tell you. We got a proposal Veterans Day of 2013, and involving this site, and that kind of, well, the fact that it was that long ago tells you where it ended up. And we just cannot continue to hold the most valuable piece of real estate that the city owns, next to two interstates. We just cannot do that in perpetuity. The city has spent millions of dollars to move departments to other places, to acquire land, to knock down a building or two over there. This has been a long struggle for us, and it was disappointing to hear from the medical systems that had indicated that they were willing to collaborate on this, and I hope that they do. So here's what I'm going to propose. I'm going to propose that we continue this paper to allow a little bit more breathing room here, and I am loath to do that, and, and time is, is not on our side here. I hope that we can move forward with this. As much as I appreciate what you all are trying to do, I was elected by the people in my district to look out for the City of Richmond and our financial future, and I think you all would be the best proposal, but we got to see some, a proposal at some point in the not-too-distant future. So, Madam President, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this matter for 30 days.
I'll second that motion. Dr. Nubel.
Yes, I'd like to look to the audience. Thirty days is not that long a period of time. That presses...
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just would be remiss if I don't just make a, a small comment in reference to the constituency and the allowing constituents to have a say. I, I don't believe that any of us stop our constituents from saying, this is what we'd like to see, this is what we would like to have in our city. I, I don't believe that that's the group I work with. I believe we take their opinions and consent, in consideration each and every time. However, with that said, I never hear stress until there is a proposal. It's when something comes, then that's when the whole agitation happens. I'm not hearing that someone couldn't have put in a proposal, if they had a proposal before, I believe somebody did try to put a proposal on the Boulevard at one point, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Something went on, on the Boulevard, at some point. And so I guess I'm trying to, to say that we've got to, for me, learn to take the lead and move things forward. We've got to try to do our best to make sure that we're doing the best for our city. I, I don't know what, what to say, other than it's been a long road with the Boulevard, it has. What does it hurt for a longer road for the Boulevard? And I know you said 30 days. I, I'm hoping that something can happen in the 30 days, but we've waited. We, we've done some things, and, and some things are in motion. It's like we wait till things get in motion, and then we decide to, we're tired of waiting, we're tired of, at some point, let's be the Richmond that can have some good stuff, that it's not that hard, it's not that complicated. We can do some great things. This is just, I mean, a children's hospital and the hospital that I saw in Nashville, I thought that was just awesome. And, and I would be proud to have one of those in Richmond. It was absolutely fabulous. And, and a lot of people that I know, they have the Medicaid, they have all of the other, it's going to help some people, a whole lot of people, that can't afford to just go to the hospital, to just go to the average place. I want to fight for that thing that helps that person that can't have the average thing. All of us sitting up here, we probably can afford to take our kids to wherever. That's not the average, average person that I know. The average person that I know, they need something like a children's hospital, and they need it on a bus line. They need it somewhere close that they can take their children. Hillside needs to be able to take their children to the Boulevard. Jackson Ward needs to be able to take their children to the Boulevard. Blackwell needs to take their children to the Boulevard. And so with that, I can do a little more waiting, because I know people that have, that need the bus line for their children, and they need just, they need more than an outpatient. They need, if their children need inpatient, that they have a place that's going to take the health insurance, or Medicaid, or Medicaid, or all of that that they have, to help their children be healthy. And so I thank you for the 30 days. I can't tell you that I won't fight again after the 30 days if we haven't gotten to a closure. I probably will be that person that still will want to fight to do something different with that.
Madam President, I'd like to second that motion. I think that's a motion, I don't know if you got it seconded. It was seconded or? Yes, it was seconded. Oh, okay, then.
Ms. Trammell.
Madam President. Can I just say that, as I... That's okay. Can I just say that what I had said at the beginning, this gives now the citizens an opportunity to bring it to the table for a discussion, and now, once this gets out, we're going to have all kinds of citizens calling us for other discussion. That's what I was getting at from the beginning, and this is what this paper has did. I mean, look, look at the discussion we've had tonight, and the main thing, as you said, I have said, we need a children's hospital in Richmond. South Side Boulevard, we need that children's hospital.
Thank you. Ms. Samuels.
Yeah, I can't vote for the 30-day continuance, we may need a friendly amendment, because we don't have a meeting in 30 days.
Okay, if we can...
We, we have a June 22nd or a July 27th meeting.
Can we, July 27th?
That is acceptable, thank you, Ms. Samuels. We'll do that July the 27th.
I'll second it, Madam. Thank you. Mr. Blaus.
Thank you, Madam President. Just like to say a few things tonight, and I'm happy to continue the paper. I want to say a few things to, to clarify all of the people that have come down here and spoken from the heart, and, and this, regardless of information that may have been spread about what this paper does, or would do, it would not decide the merit or the future of the children's hospital. If that were on, if that were up for debate tonight, it would pass nine to nothing with support, no question. We, we know the, I did not go to Nashville, but we all know the benefits children's hospitals have played out, whether they're in Nashville, or Harvard, or Virginia Beach, and, and we know that we need one here. Any of you all that are involved know that Ted Abernathy is the nerve center of the genesis of this movement, or one of them, and he's my second father. I would take a whooping if, if I didn't think this was a good idea. But I also think that, to a couple of points made tonight about, about the wait, the President's right, we have been waiting a long time on the Boulevard. I was looking up the old plan that had retail on the Boulevard, in hopes of moving the stadium to Shaco Bottom, and their plan was to issue a request for qualifications in January of 2014, and a design contract awarded by February 18th. What this paper would do is ask the Economic Development Department to issue a request for qualifications 90 days after it gets approved. And then you got, so you're basically looking at a four-month window from time they put it together, to the time they put it on the street, to the time that people have to respond. If you look at the interest in the five-and-a-half acre GRTC site where the Street Art Festival was held, people, developers from all over the country are salivating over all kinds of ways to develop that property. Imagine developers looking at a 60-acre parcel, and I'm not saying that they could or could not include a children's hospital. It's clear that with Bill and Alice Goodwin's $150 million pledge, the children's hospital is probably more qualified than any developer that's going to put an idea forward. However, we can't wait, I can't remember the example that Mr. Aguilasto gave, but he said, in one case, it took seven years, in some cases, I believe one of the speakers said it took longer. You know, it, it's unfortunate what happened last month with, with the other two systems, and it makes your job, our job, that much harder to get this done, but a lot of us believe that it can be done, and we will work with you. However, we do need options just in case the worst comes to pass, or the, the Children's Hospital Board may decide that another site is more practical, for whatever reason. That's not our decision to make, that's the, the organization's decision to make. And, and I do believe that, you know, anytime that you, anytime that you do something large, whether it's building a children's hospital, if you build a new house, you vet people, and you can, A, see if they can build the house well to your specifications, you check them to make sure they're insured and bonded, and you make sure that they do what they say they're going to do to deliver their product. And RFQ, for other potential uses, only puts in our... And RFQ for other potential uses only puts in our basket possible uses if the children's hospital goes somewhere else or choose another site. Now, maybe in the next 45 days, that decision will be made. It might take a little longer. That, that's up to you all. Again, it's not up to us. I think, I think what we need to do is take a step back and realize that if this, if this is the site, then the hos- uh, the Alliance needs to let us know and, and decide. We need, we need a plan going forward. And one of the, I was doing some research over the weekend about this, and this is why the delay part of this is, is scary. And I'm quoting from an article after the April 11th meeting that the Alliance held it at the Jewish Community Center. "Such a project would have to go through a state certificate of public need approval, approval process which can take months of review. Applications for projects on the scope of a new hospital are accepted twice a year in June and December." So the earliest we'd be able to get in front of the state would be December. That's assuming, I, I don't know what's required, the, the article wasn't that specific, but, you know, my guess is you've gotta have a deal, you gotta have a location, and you've gotta have a design of some type. So if we can get all that done, or if we're moving that way in December, great. If not, you know, we need some type of realistic timeline and, and we, we can't, can't continue to wait for seven or 10 years, even though that has kinda become the Richmond way, as Mr. Agelasto said. I think it's important for us and I think this body is ready to do whatever it takes to assist you all. And, and that's from a, from a standpoint of planning or support, regional perspective, certainly. I think we can do it, but I think the, the wheels need to be set in motion and I, I just don't think we can delay very much longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Blahous said. First, I wanna thank everybody for coming down here. Second of all, I would like to express how important, just like everyone else on this council feels, that this children's hospital would be, not only for the city of Richmond in economic development, but for the children who so badly need this, all children in our city, in our region, who need a facility like this. However, I think that this is our most valuable piece of property that we have in the city and I agree with Mr. Blahous that we wanna work with the people from the children's hospital. We would, I've been praying that the children's hospital would be on this site, I guess for a year since it was top secret and then it went public, but sooner or later, a decision has to be made, one way or the other. And so I'm happy to vote to continue this paper, happy to work with everybody who is supporting this hospital, and hopefully we can get something worked out together so that we can move forward and provide this service for the region, for the children of this region. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Agelasto?
Thank you, Madam President. I think I wanna just offer one insight on a continuance. And while I think, what I'm hearing from my colleagues on council is that this item was on the consent agenda, that it would have had the support of my colleagues, but timing is of a concern and giving it the additional time may allay some concerns. What that does for me unfortunately is opens up a different concern and that is, we get unsolicited proposals and they're supposed to come through the city administration and then presented to city council without a mechanism in place that says, "We want to do this," and having officially acted on that. You know, there's been a whole lot of stuff in the newspaper about baseball and projects for the Boulevard and obviously the, the hospital has a concern for the Boulevard. What happens if we get an unsolicited proposal in the next 45 days? And it says, "We're fully funded, we're ready to go, break ground tomorrow." This body has deferred opening it up more publicly for qualifications and future proposals. So then how do we respond to something like that? How do we signal to the administration to handle an event like that should it occur during this delay process? And I think that's something that we need to seriously consider.
I, I would suggest we handle it the way we would, we would handle any unsolicited offer. That process is the process we would utilize at that moment.
So, but at the same time, the city administration has come to the city council saying, "We wanna abolish the unsolicited offer process so that we can put more property out for bid." And so, you know, I, I, I feel like we're, we're kind of in the crosshairs of policymaking, but we never, ever seem to get the policy established and yet the reality and real-world events still go on day after day after day.
Mr. Agelasto?
We, we can revisit that at a later time should that event occur.
Okay.
But, you know, I would wanna make sure that if there's a, a group that wants to be at the table, that, that all those should be considered and, and that's my concern for a delay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could, please call the question.
Yes, council is voting on Vice President Hilbert's motion to continue item number 23, resolution number 2014-R184 to the Monday, July 27th council meeting. Mr. Blahous?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That motion is passed and that item will be back before you on Monday, July 27th.
Madam President, if I might...
Dr. Newbill?
I know we have no purview here, but I really would strongly encourage a return to the table by all of the parties in this regard and would really ask, and I know I'm looking at you, Dr. Nelson, I don't mean to be, I mean to be looking at all who are here for whom this is a priority and really strongly encourage everyone to go back to the table to see if we can get there. So, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if we're going back to the consent agenda and the authority, please?
Yes. Council is voting on the remaining consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Blahous?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you. Don't believe we have anything on our regular agenda?
That is correct.
So we can move on to the amended and continued papers?
We have no papers to be amended and continued, but we do have five expedited consideration papers. Would you like for me to read those in a block?
Yes.
They're all expenditures. Starting with resolution number 2015-R41, that's to approve an expenditure in the amount of $300 from the council district funds for the third district to pay Charles McWiggin doing businesses north of the James for the cost of a district advertisement concerning the city's leaf collection schedule. Resolution number 2015-R42 is to approve an expenditure in the amount of $300 from the council district funds for the second district to pay Charles McWiggin doing businesses north of the James for the cost of district advertisement concerning the city's leaf collection schedule. Resolution number 2015-R43, best to approve an expenditure in the amount of $5,000 from the council district funds for the second district to pay the College of William &amp; Mary to provide a stipend for an intern to assist the council member for the second district with research on policy matters pertaining to all aspects of local government. Resolution number 2015-R44, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $300 from the council district funds for the first district to make a donation to the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Richmond Foundation to support its program. And resolution number 2015-R45, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $3,500 from the council district funds for the first district to provide funding for the Museum District Association to support community green initiatives, tree planting, and house tours in the museum district. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of those five resolutions. Councilwoman Graziano, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam.
Councilwoman... Newbill, will you second that?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on expedited consideration of resolutions number 41 through 45 as read. Mr. Blahous?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Those papers are before you for consideration.
At this time, we'll have a public hearing on the papers. Are there persons in the audience that wish to speak in opposition of the paper?
Again, my name is Omar Kenyatta, resident, not district. I'm not really here to speak in opposition to the paper, mainly to get some clarification. Specifically, the paper that speaks of $5,000 from the council district funds for the second district to pay the College of William &amp; Mary, that is to provide a, a stipend for an intern to assist a council member for the second, second district with research on policy matters pertaining to all aspects of local government. If I'm, if I'm mistaken to say that public dollars would be going to William &amp; Mary specifically to pay the salary for, or in this case, an intern that would actually be working with the second district council person to do whether it's been defined as a job description, is that the case on her?
Yes, and Mrs. Samuels?
The money goes to William &amp; Mary per the way our rules work. We can't, I cannot give it to the young lady who will be coming in. Instead, we provide it to William &amp; Mary, William &amp; Mary then provides it to the student for their living expenses while they're working.
Okay. Personally, as, as I have any problems with it, but I would just think that with Virginia Union sitting right in the midst of the city in terms of its focus as an urban university, I would hope that this tone that you've been set with obviously with other members of the city council that may have such a need will give due consideration to our students, specifically in terms of National League of City talked about African-American male municipal leadership development. I think this kind of context will provide that kind of experience by getting, well, I'm not gonna be gender-specific, but definitely the cities have focus on African-American males involved in this kind of a process. I guess the other question too, a, a, a status school like William &amp; Mary will think they would actually be providing their own kind of monies to actually provide a salary for such a person. And, uh, again, I just wanna bring that up as, as a, as a noted point. And, but I think the point I'm trying to raise, if this is an ongoing process, I would hope that members of the city council would give Virginia Union some students some opportunity also participate in such intern-type environments with paid stipends. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any in the audience?
Yes, Madam Clerk, Madam President, sorry. How you doing? I'm Officer Gilbert, Richmond Police Department. I just wanted to talk about one of the papers, 215, 119, that y'all have already, I guess already have approved it and moved on. I'm not really against the paper, it's more the implication, implementation of how they're gonna make the payments and everything. Trying to give you some background on how it affects the individual officer.
Okay, sir, I, we've, we've already passed that, that place in...
Yeah, when they lumped it all together and...
Yes, sir.
Is there any way to address city council reference that paper now?
I would suggest that you would just contact and, and sign up for public comment and then you can address at that time?
Yes, ma'am. I can do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is this pertaining to the drop?
Um...
Yes and no.
Yes and no.
Madam President, you wanna go back? Consent us to go back a little?
No, I, I was just gonna highlight that there's a different ordinance that was introduced tonight, or will be introduced pertaining to the drop that would then extend it another year. So there's another...
Opportunity.
Opportunity that will probably be June 22nd.
So you can either speak at that time, sir, or you can sign up for public comment and address it at that time?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any in the audience that wish to speak in favor of any of the papers? Bring it back to council for discussion. Call the question, please.
Council is voting on resolutions number 2015-R41 through 45. Mr. Blahous?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Those papers have all been adopted.
Thank you. At this time, we move on to the approval of the minutes?
The minutes to be approved are from the Friday, May 15th special council meeting at 12:00 PM and Tuesday, May 26th informal and formal meeting of council at 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. I don't need a motion for the approval of the minutes as read. Mr. Samuels, will you make that motion?
I would, Madam Clerk. So moved.
And Counselor Robertson, will you second? Second. You're now voting on the approval of the minutes as read. Mr. Blahous?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson? Aye. Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
And President Mosby. Those minutes have been approved.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports and announcements and we'll start with Counselor Agelasto.
Thank you, Madam President. We have several very exciting things coming up in the district over the next month since before June 22nd. And the first of which is our Randolph Civic Association will be meeting on June the 15th at 6:30 PM and they meet at the Randolph Community Center. And I'd just like to make one reference, we had our district meeting at the Randolph Community Center last week and I just wanna thank all of the citizens that came out to that meeting. I think it was a very good meeting and we had broad representation and I hope that the presentations were very helpful. On Tuesday, June 16th, the Bird Park Civic League will be meeting at the Bird Park Roundhouse. Again, that meeting will be at 6:30 PM. On June the 23rd, the Oregon Hill Neighborhood Association will be meeting. That meeting begins at 7:00 PM at the William Byrd Community House. And on June the 25th, the Woodland Heights Civic Association will be meeting at 7:00 PM at the Woodland Heights Baptist Church. Now for the fun things, and they happen to both coincide on June the 20th. June the 20th, we'll be hosting our 5th district cleanup and we're gonna be focusing in the Uptown area and we'll be gathering at 9:00 AM and sending out our assignments from the Visual Arts Center on West Main Street. And we hope that people will come and join us and always you can visit Hands-on Greater Richmond and sign up for our 5th district cleanups through their website. Also, that day, Saturday, June the 20th, is RVA Streets Alive. And this is a, an initiative that the city has partnered with the Health District and with sports backers and a lot of other vendors to come and it's kind of a festival environment, but it's all about healthy lifestyles and being active and getting outside. And RVA Streets Alive will be held on June the 20th in Bird Park from 10:00 until 2:00 PM and a number of the streets will be closed off in that area around Fountain Lake for people to get out and do zumba and paddle tennis and a number of other quite fun outdoor activities and a wonderful setting within, within Bird Park. So I just invite everybody to come to your civic association meetings or to join us for our district cleanup and to get active. Lastly, if, if you're not receiving our email newsletter that goes out monthly, please contact me at parker.agelasto@richmondgov.com. Parker spelled P-A-R-K-E-R dot agelasto, A-G-E-L-A-S-T-O at richmondgov.com. You can also reach us on Facebook and on Twitter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Agelasto. Anyone else ready for their announcements? Yes, Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Vice President. I want to encourage all to get out to vote tomorrow. The polls will open at 6:00 AM and that will be across the city, but especially in Richmond's 7th District, Eastern Community, Woodville Elementary School, Fairmount House, 4th Baptist Church, 31st Street Baptist Church, Powertan Recreation Center, East District Center, and Main Street Station. Those are the sites. Please get out and exercise your right to vote and to... Please get out and exercise your right to vote and to select representation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Ms. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President Hilbert. Couple announcements for the district. Start off, we want to thank many of the city service providers for setting up exhibits at our last meeting that was held south of the river in the 6th District at the Bell Mead Community Center, and thank Ms. Trammell for coming by and paying us a visit. Sorry she couldn't stay for the full meeting, but it was very nice seeing you. We had a great turnout, and a lot of great information was shared with the residents, and so we really want to appreciate both the governmental service providers and many private sector service providers who were exhibiting at that meeting on last month. We're coming north of the river for our town meeting this month. It will be held on June the 25th. It will be at Hashkis Field, which is located on the Boulevard Belvedere, Belvedere at Six Point, excuse me, not on the Boulevard, Belvedere at, that's not right there. Okay, let me start over. Brooklyn Park, I mean, the north of the river town meeting will be held on June the 25th. It will start at 5:30 and end at 7:30. It will be held at Hashkis Field, which is on Brooklyn Park Boulevard. And so we would really encourage the residents of the 6th District, especially those residents that are north of the river, which include Barton Heights, Holland Park, Eastview, and a great part of downtown Richmond, to attend this meeting. We'll have a large representation from the health community that will be talking about stress and how stress is contributing to a lot of illness within our community. And there will be several vendors and all the other activities to show our families how we can reduce stress, and especially how we can address stress in our children. So that is June the 25th, Hashkis Field, Brooklyn Park Boulevard, from 5:30 to 7:30. Also, on the 27th of June, there will be a Cannon Creek Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Walk and Bicycle Ride. The bicycle ride is 10.5 miles. The walk is 2.2 miles, and it will start in the new Holland Park, Holland Grove Community, which is located on Dove Avenue in Holland Park, right off of the Cannon Creek Greenway, and it will begin at 9 o'clock in the morning. And we hope that if everybody survives, we'll be finished at 11:00. That's our plan. I plan to be a part of the bicycle ride. So we look forward to taking advantage of this great amenity that we have in the community and getting our bicyclists out, as well as those that would like to walk. Also, on the 27th, there will be a cleanup of Barton Heights, and that will be from the hours of 9:00 to 2:00, along with our faith-based community. And I would encourage you, if you need additional information or clarification, especially with the confusion that I started off with, to please give me a call. My cell number is 804-314-7658. The office number is 646-7964. We would also like to add you to our email list, and we would appreciate it if you would send that information to me, ellen.robertson@richmondgov.com, so that we can add you to our mailing list to receive our newsletter and other activity reports in the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Trammell, you ready?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to go back to when I had my first 8th District meeting on April the 16th. That was April the 16th, we had our first 8th District meeting of the year, and I wanted to let everyone know that our chief, Alfred Durham, has, Durham, has reached out to the surrounding counties for them to help us with issues when it involves the police. And there was a major, Major Kevin Smith from Chesfield County, who came to our 8th District meeting with our police chief and offered some assistance on the Jefferson Davis corridor. Also, he gave out some good information how the Chesfield County police officers are working with the Richmond police officers. So I wanted to take this time to also thank, again, Major Kevin Smith for taking his time to come to our 8th District meeting, and he is welcome to come anytime. Our next meeting will be Thursday, June the 18th. It's always the third Thursday of the month. Again, our next meeting will be Thursday, June the 18th, at the Satellite 4,000 block of Jefferson Davis, and it's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And also, I'd like to, again, take this time to thank all the captains who come out, and the police officers and the firefighters, and also Chip Decker, who has attended our 8th District meeting. And Monica Powell, I'd like to thank her for always taking her time to help me with the children and with the seniors and the citizens. Also tomorrow, I want to say to, please get out there and vote. The polls open up from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and we have six precincts in our 8th District, so please, please get out there and vote tomorrow because it's very, very important. Even though it's a primary, we still need to get out there and vote for your candidate. Again, the polls open up at 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I know that I've been getting a lot of phone calls in reference to 911, and I know that I have met with the director of 911, Stephen Willoughby, and there's still some unanswered questions that I have. I'm still not comfortable. If you call 911 and the call is not answered, and you hang the phone up, and then if they call you back, and if someone has already gotten into your home, and they have a knife to you or a gun to you, how are you supposed to answer that call if that person has already got into your home? When, if, I know that the police officer, he or she will come to your house, to your home, or wherever that hang-up call is, what do they do? Do they, they ride by your home, and they see that maybe the home is not broken into? Maybe there's no broken glass? Maybe there is no signs that you're even in that home? Do they leave you? Do they have permission to come in? Which I would give them permission if I call and come in my home, come into my home. So I, I think there needs to be more discussion with this 911, and no, I'm not dumb. I know that there's not police officers in uniform that's sitting there answering the phone. There are civilians that are answering the 911. Is there now a police supervisor there? I don't know. But anyway, if you have concerns and questions, please give the director, Stephen Willoughby, a call. His number is 646-5152. That's 646-5152. He said that he would come out to meetings, and he will explain the 911, which is now called standalone. So again, that number is 646-5152. And also, I'm going to ask him and maybe our chief, our CAO, and maybe our police chief to please come to my meeting on Tuesday, June the 23rd at 5:00 PM, right here in this council chambers. And Jeannie, can you help me out as far as with the parking? Because I know that there is free parking.
Yes, there is. The parking lot bordered by Clay 8th and 9th Street offers free parking for citizens who wish to come to the council meetings.
Thank you. And that's the council meeting and also the committee meetings, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. And again, that meeting will be held, my public safety meeting, and I'd like to thank my colleague, Charles Samuel, and also Vice President Chris Hilbert for attending my meetings and helping me with the public safety meeting, and also our staff. I know that I'm speaking for myself. I cannot do this without the staff on the 3rd floor and the 2nd floor for all that they helped me with papers, with my flyers, with my, getting my meetings ready. So I want to let them know how much I really, really appreciate them, especially Deborah Handy for all that she does, and Steve Taylor, Steve Skinner, and all of them. It's so, I'm going to leave her, I'm going to leave some people out, but just please know that I appreciate all the help that I get, even from the city employees that work here. It doesn't matter if somebody's getting on the elevator, to the security guards downstairs who always speak and say, "You okay, Ms. Trammell?" I want to say thank you to all of our employees because you all do not get the thanks that you all deserve. So I want to take that time to say thank you, and there was one more thing. Oh, I'd like to thank Jeannie for coming to my meeting last month, and she helped me with, I think, with the time with the police chief, because he was taking questions. So I want to thank her for helping me with that, and also Henry Mees, and all of my volunteers who helped me at those 8th District meetings, and also Mrs. Lee and her family that allow us to have those meetings there for free. And again, our meeting will be June 18th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Satellite. If you have any questions, you can call my home at 233-7382. That is my home, 233-7382. My personal cell is 240-5050. And if it's full, because it prob, I get about 50 calls a day, it gives you my home number so you can call my home. This right here is probably the only thing free in the city of Richmond. It is your smoke alarm. If you call 646-1526, those firefighters, not the police, the firefighters will come to your home. They will install this for free, and they will check it out to make sure that you have a working smoke alarm. Our President of the United States of America, Barack Obama, says everyone should have a free working smoke alarm in their home. And if it needs a battery, those firefighters will put the battery in the smoke alarm for you. So please call them, 646-1526, or go to the nearest fire station and set up an appointment so the firefighters can come to your home and install it or check out the ones that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Newbill? Do you have any?
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't have anything else to add other than to encourage folks to get out to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, and Councilwoman would like me to add, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM will be the time they'll be able to get out the vote across the city of Richmond.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Graziano.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind everybody that the personal property taxes were due June 5th, that the real estate taxes are due June 15th. In many cases, as in my own case, I had an address change which the city did not receive, so I needed to call the city in order to get my tax bill so I could pay it. And I just want to remind everyone that if you have not gotten a tax bill for your personal property, or if you pay your own real estate tax bill and have not gotten a bill, you need to call the city and request a bill so that you can pay it, so you won't get penalties and interest. That's my good news for the day, folks. Thank you.
Mrs. Samuels.
Thank you. There's a lot going on in the 2nd District, but of great import is on Monday, June 15th, the Fan District Association will be holding a special meeting to discuss bus rapid transit that goes through the 2nd District. A good, long stretch of it goes through the 2nd District on Broad Street affecting Jackson Ward, the Fan, Carver, as well as many other neighborhoods, my little sliver of the museum district even. But that's going to be on Monday, June 15th at 7:00 PM at 208 Strawberry Street, and that's about bus rapid transit. Also, I encourage everyone to save the date, June 18th, from 5:30 to 7:00 for my next district meeting. The meeting's going to be held at the Redskins Training Park, and that is located at 2401 West Lee Street. With me that evening will be a community report from Chief Alfred Durham about the city's public safety priorities, a presentation from Richmond 2015, because after all, there's less than 100 days until UCI comes to town, and of course, an opportunity to ask questions and, Lord willing, get answers to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice President Hilbert.
Thank you, Madam President. Our next district meeting will be Wednesday, June the 24th at 6:00 PM at Virginia Union University. Excuse me. Our, we'll have the police precinct report there from the sector officer in charge, either for 11 or for 12 will be there, but the report that they give is for the entirety of just the 3rd council manic district. The new chief administrative officer will be at the meeting as well, Selena Cuffey-Glen. She'll take questions and talk about her background and why she came back to Richmond and how they relate to her new duties here in the city of Richmond. We really encourage everybody to attend and bring all of your questions and concerns, and certainly bring your neighbors. I know everyone is busy on a hot summer day, but I hope that we can come out and learn more about Ms. Cuffey-Glen and her plans for the city as the CAO. I want to thank Riva Trammell for coming to the last 3rd District meeting, and Chief Durham. We had a lively discussion, wish there would have been more folks there, but we did have a good discussion about public safety, and there were no questions to duck. They, so I appreciate that the folks on North Side are on their toes and keeping us all in tip-top shape to do our jobs. This summer, we also have Parks and Rec activities. They're all underway, and I would encourage you to sign up by going to richmondgov.com and going to the Parks, Recreation and Communities Facilities link, and sign up for those classes. They're going fast. Finally, if you'd like to receive a district email blast, which comes out a couple of times a week, please send your email address to lisa.towns, T-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com, or call her at 804-646-6055. And if you're contacting me via email, please use my City of Richmond email, which is chris.hilbert@richmondgov.com. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The 9th District next regular scheduled district meeting will be take place on the 3rd Thursday, next Thursday, June 18th, at the Goodwill on Millothian Turnpike, that's 6301 Millothian Turnpike, and our new CAO, Selena Cuffey-Glen, will be in attendance. And so I'm asking all 9th District residents to please come out and meet our new CAO. The Millothian team chaired by Alma Moore will not hold its regular scheduled meeting on tomorrow because it is Vote, Vote, Vote Day. We're expecting you to all come out from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM to make your voices be heard. Meetings have been canceled just so that you can come out and vote, vote, vote. It is very important that we get out and vote. Also, on June 27th, from 11:00 to 2:00, we're having a Take It To The Streets event, and I'm asking my neighbors, the 4th, the 5th, the 8th, and the 6th, tell your children to come on over. It's going to be a great Take It To The Streets event. New life outreach for youth. Reverend Rosalynn Rivera that was here today, they have a very big event. They have 140 volunteers that come out, and it's really, really big. So I'm asking you all to tell your young people, and let's come out and have a great time together. It's going to be at the Old Warwick, the new site on Warwick Road, 6255 Old Warwick Road, the Community Life Center. So please, 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 from 11:00 to 2:00, that's a Saturday, June 27th, let's enjoy a community outreach event kickoff for our summer for our kids. Also, there is a cleanup in the district on June 13th for Hay Road, and so for more information for that, I would ask that you would contact me at michelle.mosby@richmondgov.com, or yeziah.harris, U-Z-Z-I-A-H dot Harris, at richmondgov.com, or he can be reached at And I think that's it. Did you have a question, Ms. Trammell?
Yes, Madam President, I do. On June the 27th, that's Serdi, will you have a flyer or something? So I could put it, so I can pass it out at my meeting?
Yes. I'll have. I'll have them for our next meeting on the 22nd.
I mean, my meeting's the 18th of June, so I was wondering if I could have something?
I'll give them to you. I'll make sure you have it.
And I'll pass it out at my meeting.
Okay.
Also, can I just say one other thing?
Sure.
I want to thank Vice President Chris Gilbert for allowing me to come to his meeting, which I probably will not be invited again. But I wanted to say thank you. I loved your citizens. They were wide open. And also, my colleague over here, thank you for allowing me to come to your meeting. You know, I didn't get to stay the whole time, but I really enjoyed it. And also, anybody can come to our meetings. We don't have to ask the councilperson or, my meeting's open to anyone because my colleagues say, "Can I, I didn't know I could come." Yes, you can come. Anybody can come. And also, all citizens can come to our district meetings, no matter where it's held.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the introductory papers for this evening.
Madam President, the introduction papers for this evening are as follows. Ordinance Number 2015-129, and that's to accept a D conveyance 1,000 Garden Street to the city and to authorize the CAO to act in executing such D. Planning Commission, June 15th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, June 22nd. Ordinance Number 2015-130, to accept a D conveyance 1722 Arlington Road to the city and to authorize the CAO to act in executing such D. Planning Commission, June 15th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, June 22nd. Ordinance Number 2015-131, and that's to authorize the CAO to execute an agreement for the use of a bus stop and passenger boarding and waiting area at Main Street Station for Amtrak throughway bus service. Land Use Housing Standing, Housing Transportation Standing Committee, June 16th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, June 22nd. Ordinance Number 2015-132, and that's to designate 3214 Woodrow Avenue as Walter Gaines Memorial Park. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, June 16th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, June 22nd. Ordinance Number 2015-133, and that's to designate 241 East Lady Mile Road as Lieutenant O'Zale Johnson Memorial Park. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, June 16th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, June 22nd. Ordinance Number 2015-134, and that's to amend fiscal year 2016 special fund budget to appropriate 1.4 million for providing services in the downtown Richmond Special Service and Assessment District. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, June 18th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, July 27th. Ordinance Number 2015-135, and that's to amend the pay plan to provide for a living wage of $11.66 for employees in permanent, full-time, and part-time positions. Governmental Operations Standing Committee, June 25th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, July 27th. Ordinance Number 2015-136, and that's to amend Article 1 of the pay plan to provide a 2% pay increase for classified and unclassified city employees who meet certain classifications. Governmental Operations, June 25th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, June 27th. Ordinance Number 2015-137, and that's to authorize a special use of 3022 Third Avenue for a two-family detached dwelling. Planning Commission, July 6th at 1:30 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, July 27th. Ordinance Number 2015-138, and that's to reduce the speed limit on Floyd Avenue between North Laurel and North Thompson Streets from 200 miles per hour. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, July 21st at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing Date, July 27th. Ordinance Number 2015-139, and that's to provide that the city code concerning the deferred retirement option program shall apply to current participants who exit date is or after July 1, 2015. Council Public Hearing Date, June 22nd. And Madam President, that concludes the reading of the new legislation for this evening.
Thank you. There being no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.
Well, 2 hours and about 15 minutes sometime we started tonight. I got called over at 6:05. So this is kind of a prayer. We had eight speakers speaking, and I had four of them talking about the Children's Hospital. And we'll get back to that and all because something else happened on that as well. One of the main papers we need to take advantage of or pay attention to came up under expedited consideration. Now, this changed meeting dates. So we had been expecting not to be back until July 13th. Well, that's changed. We will be back in two weeks. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be two weeks from tonight, Monday, June 22nd. And the July meeting, which normally will be on the 13th, will not be the 13th. It will be on the 27th. There'll be no meeting in August. In September, we'll meet the 2nd and 4th Monday, and then October, November, December, we'll meet the 2nd Monday of each of those months. So some changes there, taking effect immediately, so our next meeting will be in two weeks. Okay. Got to the docket review, the consent agenda. Everything seemed to go along until we got the Boulevard paper. And what that is, is talking about requests and proposals. It does not say anything about, "We're going to build this. We're not going to build this," anything else. But that took a little over an hour because people were down here talking about the Children's Hospital. After almost an hour, about an hour of deliberations, Councilman Gilbert, Vice President Gilbert, moved paper be continued until July 27th to give more of a look into what's going to be going on, the possibilities here, there, and whatever. In any event, it's not going to be heard until the 27th of July. It'll come back before us. Following that, the consent agenda was approved by a 9-0 vote. Expedited consideration, these were council expenditures. They were all approved 9-0. Then we got the approval of minutes, reports from council members, introduction of papers, and now we are adjourned. And don't forget, tomorrow is primary day. Get out there and vote. Whoever you vote for, that's your business, but make sure you get out and vote because if you don't vote, you have no complaints to make because you have a choice, and you can make that choice tomorrow. So get out and vote as you please, but please vote. And we will see you again in two weeks on June 22nd for our next meeting. And so for gavel to gavel, I'm Dick Harmon saying good night.